I'd like to call the October 17th, 2024 meeting to order. We will begin with invocation by Mrs. Kraft.
Thank you. So this is from Life is Better at the Beach. Inspirations for living each day as if you're at the beach. Some of life's best memories are made at the beach. The boat rides and the water skiing, the smell of saltwater in your hair, those early morning walks when the beach is still quiet. So many memories remain vivid even after the last load of laundry is washed and summer settles into fall. That one summer you turned red as a lobster after trying to bronze your skin quickly, you can laugh about it now. Your first experience of summer love and awe-inspiring thunderstorms stay tucked in your memory. You remember all the nights you sat with your family declaring that this sunset was summer's best, only to repeat the same thing the next night and the next. You can practically hear your dad's booming laughter after your first attempt at water skiing, and the scent of honeysuckle always reminds you of the path leading to the beach house. Living and experiencing every moment creating lasting memories at the beach. You heard, saw, smelled, tasted, and touched different things every day, and they all combined to form some of your life's best memories. You may not be able to live at the beach 365 days a year. Your home may be in the rolling hills of Pennsylvania or the cornfields of Wisconsin or Currituck. You may live in the city amidst skyscrapers and office buildings or in the suburbs of West Michigan. Wherever your home lies, even if it's not by the beach, you can still make equally heartwarming memories. Live your life as you would at the beach. Put down your phone and unplug from social media, even for a couple of hours. Create space in the day to walk through your neighborhood and marvel at your neighbor's garden. Take pictures in your mind instead of with your phone. And be social with your friends instead of being hooked on social media. Savor the last bites of dinner instead of racing to get the kids off to bed. See your life, listen to your life, live your life, and make lots of memories. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to say a few words about one of our former employees, Kim Ashby. She began working as a substitute teacher with us in 2005 and then was hired as an elementary teacher at Griggs Elementary in '07, transferred to Shawboro Elementary in 2016, and taught there until 2019. While living and teaching in Currituck, Kim was a friend to many. She was one of the kindest people I've ever met. She worked alongside me in the booster club at the high school where children were classmates. She resigned in 2019 and moved to the Sanford area where she began teaching middle school math, I believe. Sadly, Kim was at her home in Avery County when Helene struck. At this time, they are still searching for Kim. She is lost. The flood knocked their house off the foundation. I have been in touch with her daughter, Jessica, and following her every day with her Facebook posts, and I did reach out to her and ask if there was anything she'd like for me to share with the Currituck community where her mother was so loved. She said, "We just ask for prayers to find her and to help give our family strength and eventual peace." So at this time, I'd like for us to have a moment of silence for Kim. Thank you. And next, we will have the pledge of allegiance led by JP Napp.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and moving on, we have your school spotlight with Principal Christian Lowe and the JP Napp Early College.
Greetings Chairman Rose, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, Dr. Lutz, and everyone in attendance, both in person and digitally. My name is Christian Lowe, and I am extremely proud and honored to be the principal of JP Napp Early College. Representing the Spartan community with me this evening is JPK Assistant Principal, Mr. David Thompson, JPK Visionary Standout Scholar, Mr. Aiden Forstner, JPK Trailblazing Student Leader, Ms. Gwyneth Hudson. And let me rewind for a second because I didn't really add any adjectives to Mr. Thompson's, you know, before I described Mr. Thompson. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how valuable he is to JP Napp. He's so proactive and such a positive presence at Napp and gives solid feedback to both faculty and students, well-liked. He's reliable, he takes it to the max every single day, and he's a huge contributor to JP's Napp success, so I'm so grateful he chose to join our team. I appreciate you more than you know, Mr. Thompson. And finally, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce JPK Teacher Extraordinaire, Ms. Rachel Benner. She is a phenomenal educator who embodies the spirit of innovation in our theme this year at JP Napp, Embrace Your Quest. Despite her years of experience in education, Ms. Benner approaches each day with the enthusiasm and passion of a first-year teacher, continuously seeking new ways to captivate and inspire her students, making learning not just educational but also genuinely enjoyable. She recognized each student as an individual, using data-driven instruction to tailor her lessons to meet their unique needs. Her intentionality in lesson planning fosters strong relationships with her students, creating a classroom environment where they feel valued and engaged cultivating growth and achievement across the board. Shortly, Ms. Benner will showcase her innovative use of gamification in the classroom. This approach aligns seamlessly with the New North Carolina Portrait of a Graduate, nurturing essential durable skills such as adaptability, collaboration, communication, critical thinking, empathy, a learner's mindset, and personal responsibility. These skills are vital as we prepare our students for a future where the job of today is not necessarily the job of tomorrow. In this rapidly changing world, it's imperative that we equip our students with the tools to be competitive thinkers, ready for success in college, careers, or military service. Tonight, you'll get a glimpse into the remarkable work of one of the best educators I've had the privilege of working with throughout my career. Please join me in welcoming the amazing Ms. Rachel Benner and two of her incredible students as they share their insights on gamification and its impact on learning. I promise she's an innovator. Can you just click that?
No, that's just, that's just-
That's the graphic.
I can click that button.
Yeah, there we go.
All good, right? You're good. When you need to. Hello, everyone. That was, that was my, that was my trial and error right there. Madam Chair, Dr. Lutz, Kaylee, and esteemed members of the board, thank you so much for having me here today. In front of you is some feedback from some of my current students because I was only allowed to bring two. So, but everybody, part of a lot of what I talk about today is student voice, so I wanted to make sure I brought some more of it with me. Okay? So I would like to talk about gamification today. Gamification, which is gaming in the classroom, is not just about fun. It's a tool for scaffolding learning, promoting rigor, and tracking growth. My goal today isn't to convince anyone that games have a place in the classroom. I hope none of us are that boring, and I hope we'd all agree that fun can play a role in learning, and it should. Rather, I'd like to show you how gamifying lessons meets our learners where they are so that we can level them up. Every activity is standards-aligned to the North Carolina curriculum, but students don't even realize it. The focus instead is on engaging students meaningfully while building stamina where it counts, and I get to be the wicked wizard of Oz behind the curtain tricking them into learning. It's done in a unique personalized way, and even better, I get to make the content more difficult than I might have otherwise. They're thinking, learning, taking risks, collaborating, moving and shaking, but learning. Did the slide change? Okay. So games are fun. First, I would like you to think of a game that you like. Maybe it's on Xbox, maybe it's golf, maybe it's Monopoly, maybe it's poker. Okay, you got your game? Okay? It's fun because it offers challenge, progression, and mastery. To play, you must learn the rules and develop strategies, and that keeps you engaged. The balance between difficulty and skill is key. If it's too easy, it's boring; too hard, and you quit, give up. That sweet spot where challenge grows with your abilities is what keeps players coming back. Challenge, progression, and mastery are all key words that have a welcome place in my classroom, and I also like the part where they keep coming back. When I embed a lesson into a game, students engage with rigorous, standards-based material without feeling burdened by it. For example, they might analyze a passage from Faulkner in a literary quest or escape room unaware that they're meeting multiple learning standards simultaneously. I'm proud of the culture I've cultivated in my classroom. To a student or observer, the energy is often electric, marked by collaboration or engagement, controlled chaos if you will. But it's important to note that engagement does not always equal learning. This was something I learned early in my teaching career. Where engagement is desirable and necessary, it's critical that students aren't just doing stuff. Doing stuff is being engaged. But I want quality engagement marked by deep understanding and observable progress. To do this, I track that progress with meaningful data on a standards-based dashboard ensuring I know where each student is excelling or needs additional supports. Questions and challenges focus on a mastery of key skills, not just task completion. That's doing stuff. This allows me to prioritize quality over quantity and focus on critical thinking skills and learning with fidelity. Gamification allows students to work smarter, focusing effort where it matters most. Just last week, I played a game that my students helped me name, Rainbow Railway. Sitting with their group on a train of chairs, that's the picture that you see in my classroom there, students read a challenging excerpt from literature and are asked to define or give synonyms for a keyword in context. They have mere seconds to jot down their idea, pass it up to the person in front. That person then chooses what they believe is the best answer and hands it to me. Then they rotate seats. For the most challenging tasks, we take a second to pause for a teachable moment, and while they absorb that lesson and catch their breath, and then we jump right back into the fray, where students are feverishly reading and thinking and scribbling and passing, I'm collecting data in a disguised formative assessment. It's called Rainbow Railway because each group has a different color ticket that they pass up, which in turn allows me to quickly gauge which students or groups need additional help with a skill without them knowing. In the meantime, they gain valuable practice in a low-stakes environment where every single student, even like that student, is not just gripped with engagement but learning. So I'm gonna let these two prove it for a little bit. So first, let me introduce Aiden Forstner. I believe you all already know Aiden.
Hello, everyone. Like Ms. Benner said, my name's Aiden Forstner, and I'm a 10th grader at JP Napp. Starting off, Ms. Benner is one of the most liked teachers at JP Napp, not just because of her amazing personality, but because of the way her classroom feels, the vibe of it. She uses gamification, of course, to make the classroom fun because we don't want traditional classes, because who does? They're boring, nobody really sits through them. But through her gamification, I not only learn, but I have fun, and that's not something you can really get in classrooms anymore. I take a lot of honors classes at Napp, and not, none of them feel like Ms. Benner's do, and I think that all has to do with gamification. I was an introvert when I first met her, but I feel like I've slowly come out of my shell, and all I have to think is her and gamification.
Hello, my name is Gwyneth Hudson. I'm a 10th grade student at JP Napp Early College High School. Thank you. You will find many students in the classroom that are introverted, as Aiden just said. Given the chance, they choose not to be called on or participate because it's more comfortable staying in their shells than putting themselves out there to really learn. And I have both introverts and extroverts in my class, but yet every time Ms. Benner introduces a game, everybody participates. The games help us use trust and teamwork to help accomplish the task at hand, and this is because the low-risk but high-reward environment encourages them to participate with their team and in their learning. This has not only helped us learn the course material, but has had an impact on how comfortable we are in the classroom and encourages us to participate outside of the games. I personally am a perfectionist. Often, I can be discouraged from participating for fear of getting something wrong, but the games have given me a chance to become comfortable making mistakes and learning from them. Gamification isn't just about helping students enjoy learning, but it creates an environment where learning thrives because the students are engaged and unafraid of making mistakes but instead learn from them and grow. Thank you. Now invite Ms. Benner back up to the stand.
In being able to adjust instruction and tailor quests to individual needs, engagement meets growth. I'm able to increase rigor because the delivery is fun, and I lean into the ownership that my students take over their learning. The investment becomes natural. The gamified structure sustains engagement while the formative assessment process, coupled with intensive calculated rigor, ensures measurable growth. I've seen improvements in students' ability to analyze text deeply and write sustained, well-organized responses to prompts because I snuck in really intense practice the Friday before when we played Hurry Up Chicken Butt. I'll come back to that. The focus is not on how much work students complete, but on how well they master the standards. Gamified learning builds stamina in reading, writing, thinking, talking, ensuring students succeed in both classroom assessments, state benchmarks, and even into their lives. So, okay, let me go back to Chicken Butt for a second. I wrote a speech so that I don't like do this because I tend to get comfy, so let me get comfy for a second. I have a six-year-old at Shawboro Elementary. We are campers, my family. I try not to raise him in front of a screen. That's why I couldn't work it clear. And we camp rain or shine, and one time in the middle of a torrential downpour, we said, "That's it, pull out all the games." We're having, it was gaming and snacks, there were no meals, it was only snacks and games. And I try and buy ones, there's, it's, you know, a lot of games are coming out now for young kids that are emerging readers. It's not just Monopoly Junior, but there's ones tailored to my son's age. Hurry Up Chicken Butt. And I got 30 years on this kid, and I had so much fun, you guys. It was so much fun. So I did what any gamifying teacher would do, and that Monday I brought it to school, and I was like, "You guys," turned Hurry Up Chicken Butt into a grammar game. So we play it all the time now, and I would like you guys to meet Big Booty Judy. This is our classroom mascot and a reminder to make it fun. She's well-loved. Let me get back to acting right. I'm empowering all of my learners through voice, choice, and growth, and I'm eager to lead future professional development to encourage my peers to do the same. We're doing so in both formal development and kind of some weekly stuff I'm going to start pushing out because they really want to see it in their other classes, and I try and develop games that I can share with others. Nothing that you've seen today is unique to the language arts classroom, it's just like better there. Gamification provides students with multiple ways to engage, while data-driven instruction ensures they grow academically and socially. By balancing engagement and rigor, I harness students' brain power to build the stamina they need for meaningful academic success in school and beyond. I'd love for you to visit our school. Please come to my classroom and jump into the fray, see how my students are thriving in this gamified, standards-based environment. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
Okay, just a couple of things. What a great presentation, you know, with you and your students, and I'm sure that your children are very engaged in your classroom, and I love the idea of gamification. Is that like something that, did you create this gamification, or is it like a program, or how did it come to be?
So gamification, it's literally taking something you might normally do, but turn it, turn it into a game, make it fun. So I like have a sticker on my board that says, "Make it fun." And there's, I mean, there's plenty of science backing it, there's, you can take courses on it, I have. In fact, Dr. Lutz and I were talking about Johns Hopkins just last week. I took a whole course on it there when I studied digital age learning, and the science around it really is very much digital, but I have, kids are used to Kahoot and things like that, but I'm trying to simplify a little bit. I want it to be something that any teacher could bring into their classroom, because a lot of the things we do, all you need is a stack of questions. But this way, they're, they're up, they're moving, they're collaborating, and I get answers and work from all of my students. So instead of trying to wring some work out of them, you go and participate, you're gonna look silly, because they want to play the game, they do. So it really is a good time. So gamification isn't new, I think it's just, that's why I didn't want to come and defend gamification, I did want to come and say, "It's okay to play games with your students," because of course it is. I really wanted to highlight how you can maintain, if not elevate, that level of rigor by leaning into the engagement that you glean from your students.
So the higher levels of thinking.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's so much double duty, and they don't realize it. If I could call your attention to one of my favorite quotes from here, from Liliana, it's right under that word "love," where she says, "I don't feel like I'm learning, but when I do an assignment, I see how much I learned." So in, you know, in the game, they're just, they're absorbing, you know, without realizing it. I love tricking my kids into learning, and I'm real transparent about that, too, you know, "Ha, ha, ha, I guess what you did today." But then, the next time I ask them to perform, the skills are just there, and I love when they're actually surprised that they have them, or like Liliana, who will tell you, "Oh yeah, look at that."
What an amazing outcome.
Thank you.
And if I may interject, excuse me, if you, is it, is on the screen, I don't know what you can see. Do you see the classroom?
Now we do.
You do, okay. This is, she showed me this picture the other day, and I absolutely love it. There's not one student in there who's not engaged and laughing. Evan in the front there is biggest smile I've seen him have. And I actually visited her classroom, I don't know if it was before or after this picture, but I sat and I smiled the whole time, almost one of those cheesy smiles, but you know, you can't help it. You go in there and you see kids engaged, students who might normally have, try to have their head on the desk, and they're, and once they, once the front there, the leaders turn in with their work, they go to the back and they rotate, so they're constantly up and moving. So it's, it's just a, it's a fun environment, but educationally fun.
Yeah.
You know, and that makes a difference. How many of y'all read a book that you didn't care for too much? Okay, focus, focus, focus. But if you're into it, it's no problem to read it, and this is very similar. If you're into it, you're engaged, you're, you're learning without even knowing, it's phenomenal, it's something to watch, and we invite each and every one of you in to experience it, it's amazing.
And I love that Mrs. Benner is eager to share with her peers and, you know, try and get it into other classes as well, and so that's great.
November 15th, she's doing a PD on that.
Yeah.
Yes, and we just had a discussion earlier about the weekly, kind of a, how do I describe that? She's gonna kind of introduce it and then show it in action, you know, during-
If it's nuggets I can hand out, I'll hand you a nugget. I like making a nice one-pager, I like things to look, you know, I'm a publicist, so I want it to look good. But sometimes, like with the kids, when we're playing a new game, I don't put directions on the board and say, "Read these, we're playing." Students don't read directions, they say, "What do we do?" So, so that I can get them in there, it's usually just like a 10-second rundown, or like on this one, I'll be like, "All right, you guys are in the hot seat, let's, let's play around together, and you'll figure it out." You ever play a game with somebody, you invite them over, something you play all the time, you say, "Just watch around, you'll get it." So that's, so sometimes I'm gonna invite teachers in during their planning to just play with me for a minute, and other times it'll be a quick, easy handout.
And you obviously are a teacher that leads by example, so I'm sure that your peers will just join right in, and you'll help them, and that's great. Other ideas, comments?
I just wanted to say, I love this one, this from Declan. Sometimes you teach and help them, and sometimes they teach and help you, and as a teacher, there was never a day that went by that I didn't feel like I learned just as much from my students as they learned from me, sometimes more.
I would, either one of you take this. Declan is in both of their classes, and each of my classes, as you would know, they all have their own unique personality. Of course, there's the kids individually, but then there's like the one for each of them, and I call Belle One my heart, like I love starting the day with these kids, and these are both in it. Which one of you wants to talk about, like, the camaraderie vibe in there?
Oh.
Belle, yeah, I'll get that. Oh, my goodness, that's my favorite way to start my day. Just, it's such a fun group of kids. Like I said, they're both introverts and extroverts, so you get some that walk in, and they kind of want to put their head down before it starts, and then you have those that are already like chomping at the bit to go. They're like, "What can we learn today? What games will we be doing?" I think what really gets us all up in communicating with each other is every morning she has like a little riddle or word puzzle that we do, and when we do that word puzzle, we're communicating with the people at our table and talking with each other and collaborating to try to figure out like who will get it first. And I just think it's so much fun, and most of these groups have a lot of different types of personalities and people, and it's been so cool to see how we grow with each other and as a group, and not even just in our own groups, but as a class as a whole. I feel like under Ms. Benner's instruction, we've become, we've become quite the group, and it's very easy, it's very easy to learn with them and to lean on each other for support and be comfortable asking questions and learning in the classroom.
I think that's awesome.
And if I may add, because back to my wicked witch and my Oz thing, I don't shy away from the fact, and I'm not shy about, and I share it with them, that because we have that camaraderie and we have that little family in our belt, and I hope later Kaylee could even attest to it, too. I've taught Kaylee longer than I've taught either of these two, and they'll do anything that I ask them to.
Oh.
Which means, which means, because I was talking about rigor, like, they read Faulkner this week, they read excerpts from Les Misérables, and like, like fully got into it, begged to go see the play. We mourned not being able to go see. Next semester, there are going to be five novels for me, just next semester, so the, I cannot emphasize how much I want, I want it to be a really hard class, but, but a really cool one that they look forward to coming to, and me as well, you know, I've, like I said, I have a six-year-old, and if I can't be with him, I want to be with these.
You've got that rapport established. Great job.
You told me I had five to seven minutes, I'm gonna go sit down.
Other comments, board members?
Thank you so much for coming up here. Your enthusiasm is infectious, I can see why you're so well-loved, and to our students, you both speak very well, and we're always very proud of you. Thank you for coming.
I'm proud of you for holding that chicken.
That's Big Booty Judy, that's not chicken.
What class is this in?
English II and English III, both at honors level.
And I must say that I take three other very intensive, very difficult classes, and I feel her work is just as difficult, and the concepts can be just as difficult to grasp, but because of the games and because of the way she teaches it, I'm not losing sleep, and I'm actually learning more than I do in most other classes.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Excellent closing remarks, Gwyneth.
Okay, thank you, JP Napp.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Real quickly, I'm sorry, excuse, I just, I think you hit a nail on the head, it's just an infectious passion and enthusiasm that it, I wish my teachers were like that when I went to high school, you know, so thank y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mrs. Virginia Arrington, Director of Student Services. She's gonna talk to us about our accreditation. She's gonna talk to us about our accreditation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Lutz. My presentation this evening is quick. It is my distinct honor and pleasure to present the board with this certificate that was provided to us by Cognia. So if you guys would like to come out front, Ms. Boyer will take a picture.
That's you as well.
That's me, too.
Come on.
Okay, here we go. Ready?
Ready, three, two, one, smile. Thank you.
Thank you all. I know a lot of hard work went into gathering the documentation for Cognia. Cognia had lots of good things to say about our school system, for which we're very proud of. But for those of you that really spearheaded the gathering of that information, thank you. And next, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we will hear from our superintendent, Dr. Lutz, work session review.
Only two items were discussed in the work session. The first was a minor adjustment in rezoning for Talls Creek Elementary School Zone. And that is on the consent agenda. And then we had a lengthy presentation on our school performance data, which we're gonna go over here again in a few minutes.
Okay. Public comment session. Did we have anyone sign up? Okay. Budget amendments. Mrs. Susan Mazel, Air Finance Officer.
Good evening, Chairman Rose, fellow board members, and Dr. Lutz. I have several budget amendments for your approval this evening. So this is a time of year where we tend to have a lot of budget activity going on. We've got the majority of our staff hired in, so we have slotted them into the budget where they're gonna be. And we still have state allotments that are continuing to drop in. So starting with budget amendment number two with the State Public School Fund, we had an increase of $976,518 budgeted for allotments received in CTE credentials, school bus safety grant, which was actually carryover money from last year, purchase of school buses. And as a reminder, we don't pay for the school buses. DPI pays for the school buses, but we're required to carry them on our books. We budgeted for additional funding for K-5 enhancement teachers, school building admin, CTE months of employment, limited English proficiency, teacher assistance, transportation, AIG, non-instructional support personnel, and supplemental funds for teacher compensation. So as you can see, there's a lot of state movement going on.
CTE months of employment, are you talking about summer?
No, so CTE has two pots of money. One is specifically positions, and that's what months of employment is. They give us a certain number of months of employment to pay for teachers.
Okay. And teacher assistance?
That's an allotment for teacher assistance.
And that's what the state funds?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
They had already given us an allotment, but they gave us a little additional to add on to.
Okay.
Okay, next is local, our local fund. This is budget amendment number three. This is a net of zero. We just reallocated some funds for current needs. Next would typically be our federal funds. I'm hoping, I'm very hopeful, that next month we will have a budget amendment for federal funds. Federal programs operate on a different fiscal year than the school system does. They run October to September. So we're just starting to see federal programs starting to be approved. So hopefully next month, I'll have an amendment on federal funds. But next in the packet is capital outlay, budget amendment number two. We had an increase here of $2,296,754.68. We budgeted for multiple maintenance carryover projects and one public school repair and renovation project. And then last, we have our other local funds, budget amendment number two. We had an increase of $174,117.62. We budgeted for Chromebook fees, NC pre-K, a Currytuck Kids donation. We also budgeted for summer reading camp and general operations. Any questions this evening?
Can you elaborate on the Currytuck Kids donation?
I may have to get Ms. Arrington to come assist me with that.
Well, she's coming up. Is the summer reading camp for next year, is that, or is it what we did from last year?
It's from last year, so we don't, we don't always get enough states to need to cover it.
Okay.
Currytuck Kids provides us an allotment in order to provide things, items for students who are in need, whether it's school supplies, eyeglasses, co-pays for doctor visits, those kinds of things. So they give us the funds so that we can make decisions and use that to help the students.
Is that on an as-needed basis? Or are they giving you X number of dollars every year now?
They start off by giving us $1,000. And then depending on how we spend that down, we can request more.
I know Currytuck Kids has been a huge help to our school system. I remember, you know, helping when you had children who needed a pair of shoes or needed to go to a camp or a pair of eyeglasses. They jumped in and helped, so hats off to Currytuck Kids.
On a side note, they also provide funds for every school to, for the book fair, so that students can receive books.
That's awesome.
Also, probably needs to be noted, they just donated $2,500 to the High School Booster Club.
And was that earmarked for something in particular?
They, our new athletic director has a sponsorship package, and they are the top sponsor. And so that is what they agreed to, $2,500, because they felt there's over 400 athletes in the building, that that was a way for them to help the Booster Club and help those kids. But it's substantial.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Mazel?
No, it's an act and I am.
Okay, if there are no questions, do we have a motion to approve these budget amendments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, we have Mrs. Kristi Hodges, Air Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Ms. Christina Boyer, Communication Coordinator, along with Dr. Lutz, Air Superintendent. And they're going to tell us about our 2324 school performance and testing data. I need to find her new name.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Lutz. Thank you for the opportunity to share the district's story with you. Today, I will highlight the progress we've made, as well as our commitment to continuous improvement, showcasing our resilience, dedication, and meaningful growth. Since the introduction of North Carolina's accountability model in 2013, Currytuck County Schools has reached its highest performance during the 2324 academic year. While many factors have contributed to this growth, our district's steadfast commitment to the Curricular Strategic Plan has provided a clear and intentional roadmap for success. Today, I will guide you through our journey, beginning with an overview of the Curricular Strategic Plan, highlighting our belief and mission statements, and concluding with a detailed analysis of the 2324 data and continued next steps. The Curricular Strategic Plan, also known as CSP, was launched in the spring of 2021 as a direct response to the challenges posed by the pandemic. Recognizing the need for a comprehensive strategy, we determined that focusing on core instruction through the CSP was the best path forward. During the spring of 2021, we conducted numerous listening sessions with various stakeholders, collecting over 1,800 data points. These data points served as our guide during the plan's first year and continue to inform our decisions as we prepared for year four. Though the CSP was designed as a three-to-five-year plan for K-12 curriculum and instruction, we started with a deliberate focus on strengthening elementary core instruction and understanding the critical role early intervention plays. The data from these listening sessions highlighted the importance of equity across the district. It revealed that a common curriculum, standardized assessments, inconsistency in the amount of instructional time dedicated to core subjects were all areas in need of alignment. As we progressed through year two, we revisited the data and developed scheduling and grading business rules to ensure consistency in those areas. With significant progress made at the elementary level in regards to core instruction, we expanded our efforts in year three to include exceptional children's and academically gifted programs. Without compromising our work in elementary education, we also began focusing on core instruction at the middle and high school levels. Now, in year four of this plan, while we have achieved substantial gains, we do acknowledge the need for continuous improvement. The annual cycle you see on this slide reflects our commitment to this ongoing process. Each spring, we evaluate the current structure and support systems within the CSP. This evaluation includes interviews conducted by the instructional coaching team with all administrators regarding the key elements of the plan, such as curricular parameters, resources, and implementation support. Additionally, we gather feedback from teacher surveys. In the years when the state's Teacher Working Condition Survey is not administered, where teachers provide feedback on curriculum and professional development, we distribute a district-specific survey to capture teacher perspectives. During this phase, the instructional coaching team also assesses the use of required resources to ensure our decisions remain strategic and intentional. The adjustment phase, which follows, involves convening stakeholders to make informed decisions based on the evaluation process. In the summer, we communicate any changes to the administration team so they can prepare for full implementation in August. Throughout the school year, progress is continuously monitored by all stakeholders, including the instructional coaching team, school-level administrators, and teachers. In the initial phase of implementation, the CSP team created a belief statement that reflects the core values embedded in the Curricular Strategic Plan. Currytuck County Schools believes that all students deserve equitable access to rigorous instruction, standards-aligned curriculum, and high-quality learning resources. This belief statement emerged directly from the priorities identified during our listening sessions. Each element of this statement is intentional, rigorous instruction. Rigorous instruction reflects our commitment to high-impact teaching practices, such as what you heard from Ms. Benner just a minute ago. In 2021, we partnered with Weston Kiesnick to strengthen instructional strategies district-wide, focusing on John Hattie's evidence-based methods. Teachers, instructional coaches, directors, and our K-12 administration team participated in this two-year professional development, which also included school walkthroughs in all 10 of our schools, to collaborate our understanding of effective instructional strategies. This foundational work continues to guide our instructional practices. Standards-aligned curriculum. Standards-aligned curriculum reaffirms our dedication to the North Carolina Standard Course of Study. While the state defines what students should know and be able to do by the end of each grade, districts have the autonomy to select their curriculum. We work diligently to ensure that the curriculum we choose is aligned with state standards, complies with legislative requirements, and provides teachers the tools they need for effective implementation. High-quality learning resources. High-quality learning resources represents our commitment to providing equitable access to state-aligned curriculum resources for every teacher and student. This document outlines the district's K-12 expected and optional use curriculum resources, all supporting this goal. Our resource evaluation process ensures that the curriculum meets current standards while remaining fiscally responsible. Alongside the belief statement, the Curricular Strategic Planning Team developed a mission statement to guide the sustainability of our three-to-five-year plan. Currytuck County Schools will ensure our instructional staff is provided with clear expectations, training, vetted resources, and continued support to grow our students into the best versions of themselves. Each component of this mission statement is critical. Clear expectations. Clear expectations provide all staff with a shared understanding of our instruction framework and serve as a roadmap for principals evaluating teachers and instruction. Our K-12 parameters establish clear expectations for teachers and administrators regarding instruction, grading, scheduling, and resource use, promoting consistency across the district. Training. Training has been central to our efforts, directly addressing stakeholder feedback. Ongoing professional development occurs through school and district PLC meetings led by instructional coaches, our MTSS coordinator, and administrators. Our quarterly PLCs on Early Release Fridays offers 26 different PLCs led by coaches, directors, and teacher leaders, fostering professional discourse. Tech Fest is hosted each February to ensure ongoing support and digital competency. Beginning teachers receive initial training in August and are paired with instructional coaches and a mentor for ongoing support. And while the majority of our pre-K5 and EC teachers have completed letters training, we continue to train new staff through two active cohorts. Vetted resources. Vetted resources ensure that all curriculum materials align with state standards. The instructional coaching team uses tools such as ClassLink Analytics, teacher surveys, administration interviews, and a formal vetting process to evaluate these resources. Additionally, if a teacher identifies a new resource not on our expected list, they can meet with their school administrator to review and submit a Google form for consideration. The instructional coaching team then vets the resource to ensure compliance with the Curricular Strategic Plan. Since the inception of the CSP, 22 supplemental resources have been vetted, and 16 of those 22 have been approved. Continued support. Continued support reinforces our dedication to ongoing assistance for teachers throughout instructional coaching and district leadership. Our curriculum resource drive provides a centralized location for teachers to access curriculum support throughout the school year. New this year, we added a Google feedback form to our district pacing guides, allowing teachers to submit suggestions or seek clarification. Now let's continue our story by looking at the district's 2324 data. North Carolina's Accountability and Testing Framework calculates school performance grades based on two primary factors. Achievement score indicators, which account for 80% of the performance grade, and school growth score indicators, which make up the remaining 20%. This table illustrates the components that contribute to the overall performance grades, helping us understand how achievement and growth influence our results. The state recognizes four levels of student achievement. Students who are not proficient demonstrate inconsistent understanding of grade-level content standards and will need support. Students at proficiency level three demonstrate sufficient understanding of grade-level content standards, but may need support as they progress to the next grade or course. Students at level four demonstrate a thorough understanding of grade-level content standards and are on track for college and career success. And students at level five demonstrate comprehensive understanding of grade-level content. Are on- are on track for college and career, and are prepared for advanced content at the next grade level. As a district, our performance this year highlights both growth and achievement. JP Napp Early College continues to be recognized as an A school, meeting growth expectations. Five schools, Jarvisburg Elementary, Knott's Island Elementary, Moyac Elementary, WT Griggs Elementary, and Moyac Middle, earned a B rating, with Jarvisburg Elementary, Knott's Island Elementary, and WT Griggs Elementary meeting growth, and Moyac Elementary and Moyac Middle both exceeding growth expectations. Currituck County Middle School, previously a low-performing school, improved to a C status and met growth goals. At the start of this presentation, I shared that the 2324 school year represented our district's best performance since the introduction of the new assessment model. This slide provides historical data dating back to 1415, when the new accountability system was first implemented. You'll note here that Jarvisburg Elementary and WT Griggs Elementary earned a B rating for the first time since the implementation of the new accountability model. This table compares Currituck County Schools' performance on End-of-Grade (EOG) and End-of-Course (EOC) assessments to the statewide averages. We outperformed the state in one hundred percent of grade-level assessments, with eight of the twenty-one assessments scoring more than ten percentage points higher than the state average, and fifteen of the twenty-one assessments exceeding the state average by more than five percentage points. This slide shows how our career and college-ready students, those achieving levels four and five, compare to statewide performance. Our district outperformed the state in fifteen out of twenty-one grade-level assessments, reinforcing the strength of our academic program. This table highlights where our district stands compared to other districts in North Carolina. In looking at the left columns on each table where grade-level proficiency achievement levels are noted, we rank twelfth out of one hundred and fifteen districts statewide and second out of the nineteen districts in the Northeast Region. Shifting to the right columns in both tables, career and college-ready achievement levels are noted, we rank twentieth out of one hundred and fifteen districts statewide and third in our region. The next four slides present comparison data from the 2122 school year to our current performance in 2324. The 2120 school year represents the first full year after the pandemic and the first year of the Curricula Strategic Plan. As shown in this first chart, we've demonstrated growth in all nine categories of students scoring at or above grade-level proficiency. In the next slide, we see our state performance ranking has improved in all nine categories as well, with grades three and four ranking in the top ten among all one hundred and fifteen districts statewide. This chart focuses on the percentage of students scoring at or above level four or five on their EOG or EOC exams. Comparing 2122 to 2324, we see growth in eight of the nine categories. While grades nine through twelve remain an area for improvement, the overall trend reflects positive progress. In this final chart, we compare our state performance ranking in 2122 to 2324. Once again, we've made gains in seven out of nine categories, demonstrating continuous improvement in career and college-ready performance. You'll also note that we rank in the top twenty of one hundred and fifteen districts in six areas. Our story doesn't end today. We are currently in the monitoring phase of the Curricula Strategic Plan, focusing on the new implementation of core curriculum resources, such as iReady at the elementary level and Common Lit for our six-eight reading teachers, while continuing to monitor resources introduced over the past three years. Our initial collaboration with the CSP focused on enhancing core instruction at the elementary level, which was essential. As we move forward, it is crucial that we maintain this momentum when our students transition to middle and high school. We also acknowledge that our high schools require further attention, and we will begin a formal evaluation of our progress to identify ongoing needs, ensuring we make the necessary adjustments to keep advancing. The instructional coaching team and K-12 administrators recognize the work ahead and are committed to supporting all of our students: students performing below grade level, students performing at grade level, and students performing well above grade level. We understand the importance of personalizing our data, as demonstrated at the September Board of Education meeting by Griggs Elementary Principal Mrs. Tid and her staff and students. They are dedicated to meeting with each student to personalize their learning goals and targets. This exemplifies the ongoing work we have ahead of us. Nick Saban, the retired Alabama football coach who has won seven national championships, once said, "In life, your roadmap is knowing what you want to accomplish, then committing yourself to doing the things necessary to reach this destination. You cannot get there without hard work and perseverance." The Curricula Strategic Plan has been and will continue to be our roadmap. Through intentional planning, support, hard work, and perseverance, we are fully committed to helping our students become the best versions of themselves." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, we talked about this for a good deal at the work session, but is there anyone who would like to add any thoughts above what we've already discussed?
I just would like to, again, thank you so much for all you did, for all three of you. I know it was certainly worked hard to give us, to thread out all that information. And yes, we do have lots of work ahead of us, we know that, but we're moving in the right direction, and I'm excited about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I'll go first, Kelly.
Just thank you again for all of your work and presenting to us, and I know it's a lot of data for us or anyone to take in, but just thank you again, and to all of our staff and students who are doing all the work, thank them, and to our families who are supporting them.
Yeah, Christine has done a great job diving deep into that data, so.
We're still working on it. Started with district, then the schools, now we're working on subgroups.
Thank you, thank you. Any other additional comments?
I would. Thank you, Kristi. First of all, I want to apologize if it was brought to my attention that I may have appeared negative during the work session. I'm passionate. I'm passionate about education, and I feel it's my job as a board member to ask questions. Because the fact is, we are improving, but the fact is, we were bad. And we were bad while people said nothing. So I'm not going to sit here and throw a party that we got to be when we should have been a B. I'm not going to give my son a reward when he comes home for a B because he's a B student. We're finally there because of the work you did. We're there because during COVID, we realized this school district was in chaos. No elementary ran the same, no one was teaching the same, and we like to make people out to be crazy when they talk about there was no curriculum. We now know there wasn't. That's why we've had to purchase so much, that's why we have iReady reading, that's why we have iReady math, that's why we're doing all of these things because it didn't exist. But we like to have a narrative like that was not the case. So my concern is not you, I know you are working hard. I know our K5 teachers are working hard. I also know we do not have a lot of curriculum six-twelve. I also know we put a chart up that we're above the state average in Math I, above one point nine percent, we have a thirty-eight point nine percent pass rate. So let's be transparent about what we're celebrating. We're celebrating a fifty percent average. We are celebrating schools having sixty percent of children not proficient, fifty-seven point one percent of children not proficient, thirty-nine point one percent of children not proficient, in the county that the state says is the least distressed financially county in the state. I just want us to do what I know we can do. I know our people work hard, I also know we ask people to wear way too many hats, and that's not popular when I say it because they say, "Oh, Dana wants to spend more money." I absolutely do. I absolutely want to have someone who specifically drills down data, specifically drills it down, so that we can figure out what's wrong, and then we can address it. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. We should be Bs. We should not have a school in Currituck County that's not a B, because we have a community that does nothing but support public education. So I am going to continue, I said in the work session that I asked DPI for the eight-thousand sheets of data, I would love for the rest of the board members to do so, it would be a great use of our time for us to drill down, then maybe the communications director wouldn't have to be drilling down data. We could drill it down. It's a chart, we could each take a school, we could say, "What is the multilanguage student? What is our economically disadvantaged?" It's not a hard chart to read, it's ridiculous for her to do on top of her other job. So I would like to challenge the board, let's each take a school, let's drill for her, and then, because the truth is, part of our job as a board of education is accountability. It's not to take pictures of bulletin boards, it's not to talk about what fun chorus concert we went to, it's to hold people accountable to see if they're doing their job. And so we're celebrating a lot of things tonight that should have already been done, glad we're there, but I made the challenge, let's each take a school, help Christine out, it's way too much, it's eight thousand pages, she has a whole nother job, each of us get a stipend, we can take a school and find the data. Thank you, Kristi.
So I would.
Just one quick thing.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I always laugh, but that's okay. Again, I'd just echo the board, just thanks for all the hard work, not just that y'all have done, but to all the administrators and all the teachers that have brung us to where we should have been, like Ms. Parker said, to where we are now. And I do love a plan, and I keep looking at it again, where you evaluate and you adjust. And that's, I think that's what we're doing. And so as long as we keep evaluating where we were at and adjusting so we don't go back there, I think we'll continue to move forward. So, thank you.
I too want to just thank every person who works in our school system. We are not quite at the top, but being twelve out of one hundred and fifteen districts is nothing to sneeze at, and it's nothing to be ashamed of. There's still room for us to grow, I understand that, but you've identified the next steps for improvement, and I feel certain we'll begin working towards these goals. Our curriculum has been expanded. After teaching here for thirty-two years, we always had a curriculum when I taught here. I know you've expanded it, and I appreciate that. We've made so much progress over the last few years, and especially in the last year, moving up more than twenty spots?
Yeah.
So I just want to say thank you for your hard work and dedication to every person that works in our school system, because it truly does take a village to educate our children, and they deserve the best.
I have a question.
So thank you.
I have one more question. We talked about the work we've done K5 and the improvement we've seen K5, we know it's from the curriculum, we feel like our instructional coaches helped move that by them being able to work individually with teachers. Do we have no instructional coaches at the middle or high level?
We do not, that was.
Part of the budget cut?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not finished, Janet, thank you.
Sorry, I thought you said one question, I apologize.
Well, I'll have a couple then, thank you. So we have no instructional coaches at that level. You had said part of year four is going to be to look at curriculum in the middle and high school?
Yes, ma'am.
So can we make a commitment that by the end of twenty-five, we could have a decision on, although, it's lots of subject areas, science, math, English, could we have a firmed-up curriculum by the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, so that we can say to our community and to our parents, to our stakeholders, "We are now good K-12, we have everything locked and loaded, and we're ready to go"?
I'd like to say yes. Right now, we can confirm our English has a current curriculum, our math does as well, our biology course does, it is an EOC, so that was our priority in the initial onset. Our social studies department does not. And so I can ensure we will work very hard to hopefully fill those gaps, but I don't know if we can do it within one year.
I appreciate your honesty, thank you. All I want is transparency. Let's just put it out there so that the public knows, we have no curriculum for social studies seven-twelve, we are.
Excuse me, we do have it.
We have state standards.
We do have social studies curriculum in, it's Discovery Education in six-eight, and then the high school is what is lacking in social studies.
I just want to be transparent, we know we have to work, we know y'all are working hard, but let's be honest about what we really need, and then go, so thank you, thank you for the transparency, I appreciate it.
And I think you did say that you've identified some weaknesses, and we will work to improve it, so again, thank you. Dr. Lutz, did you have anything you'd like to add on this?
Simply that the, it takes a lot of work on the teacher, it starts, the most, number one factor on a student's education is their teacher. And so our teachers made a commitment, they made some tough changes, and I cannot thank them enough for what they have done for our kids to start opening up doors, and our principals' leadership in this, and in Kristi, your work, the behind-the-scenes to guide it. It takes longer than we would like to make the progress that we're seeing, and we look forward to continue moving in that direction. It never moves as quick as we want it, we've had some very frustrating points along the way, but I feel very, very sure that we're going to continue to make progress, we have a plan, and we're going to stick to it. Thank you, Kristi.
You're welcome.
Please convey how proud we are of everybody, to all of our teachers, instructional coordinators, principals, everybody, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
And moving on to new construction update, Dr. Lutz.
Pictures are coming.
Ah, she said it was a little.
Again, with our storms, with the weather continuing to largely in this part of the state be very forgiving, we're on track again for late October of twenty-five, opening, and we see multiple trusses, the very clear second building, that's going to be the classrooms where you see the secondary building off, and the main part of the building, that's your cafeteria, gymnasium, and so on and so forth. So it's going to be a very, I think the setup of the building, as you're seeing it come to fruition, is going to allow the community use as well, without having access to the school, which is one of the issues we currently have with many of our builds, especially the older builds, but I really like the thought that's put into this one.
And what did you say that secondary building is going to be used for?
It's all classrooms. There's going to be a breezeway across, and it'll be all classrooms again, which will not be inaccessible in off-hours except to our staff.
An enclosed breezeway or an open?
It's enclosed.
That's a great idea.
Moving right along.
That's it.
Consent agenda, do I have a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and next, we're moving on to our student board member report. Kaylee, would you like to go first?
JP Napp Early College, our civic students recently undertook an initiative hands-on learning project centered on the U.S. Constitution's amendments. The project engaged students in creating pictionary-style clues on T-shirts, which they wore throughout the subsequent day to spark interactive discussions with faculty members. The JP K Beta Club will host an American Cross Blood Drive in the Napp Gymnasium on Monday, October twenty-eighth. This event is part of the ongoing efforts of the JP K Beta Club to support the American Red Cross and contribute to the community by organizing blood drives. Knott's Island Elementary School, it has been a busy time here at our little school on an island. We have awarded our first Student of the Month certificate and recognized Eden, third grade, Cora, fourth grade, and Jonathan, fifth grade, for exhibiting the character trait respect. Congratulations to these three students, we are also gearing up for our annual fall Congratulations to these three students. We are also gearing up for our annual Fall Festival Celebration happening next week. On October 25th, 6:00 to 8:30, we will open our campus for this family-friendly event for the entire Knott's Island community. Moyoc Elementary School. MES is spending time reflecting on data based on recent assessments with the staff to identify standards to be readdressed with, to ensure that every student is performing to their full potential. We are also excited for our largest community event of the year, Fall Festival. We invite everyone to join us on Friday, October 25th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Moyoc Middle School. It's a great time to fall in love with the good book and our students' love for reading was evident at the Moyoc Middle School Fall Book Fair. Hundreds of books reached the hands of our students. This month, our students will be celebrating kindness, inclusivity and healthy decision by making, by participating in a Spirit Week for Unity and Red Ribbon Day next week. Our first dance of the year will be our MMS Monster Mash on Friday, November 1st. We are looking to, forward to a fun evening. Shawboro Elementary School. Last week, our classrooms were filled with enthusiasm as Kurttuck High School cheerleaders and football players took time out of their busy schedules to read to our students. It was a wonderful opportunity for our children to connect with these role models while fostering a love for reading. Looking ahead, we're thrilled to announce our annual PTO trunk or treat is happening on October 18th. This fun-filled evening is a great chance for families to come together, enjoy some treats and celebrate the Halloween spirit in a safe environment. Additionally, we are partnering with the high school CTE department for an exciting construction career awareness event. Our 5th graders will have the hands-on experience of building birdhouses under the guidance of high school students. This is a fantastic way for our younger students to learn about construction careers while working alongside their older peers.
Okay, thank you. And next Amelia?
There we go. October is an exciting month for Central Elementary Schools that highlights fire prevention and the vital role of community helpers. Thanks to the efforts of our PE teacher, Ms. McDonne, and SRO Deputy Curran, students engage in interactive learning experiences that emphasize the importance of safety and teamwork. Additionally, the presence of guest legal readers such as school board member Dana Parker and Chief Deputy Jeff Walker provided students with inspiring stories. These activities enrich student learning and foster an appreciation for those who dedicate their lives to helping others. October has been a great month here at Currituck County High School. Our classrooms are diving deep into their coursework and our students are meeting the demands of their studies. Our tardies have gone down significantly and our student attendance has gone up. We have a tremendous homecoming and Spirit Week. Students and teachers alike looked very festive throughout the week. Many of our students showed great school spirit. Our English 2 and Math 1 students performed well on their most recent benchmarks. A vast majority of our students have already shown growth in their performance. Great work, students and teachers. Our Special Olympics will take place this Friday. Ms. Buzzard and her students look forward to the event. Currituck County Middle School students are academically and behaviorally off to an amazing start. We recently recognized 21 students for the Student of the Month trait of responsibility. Over 30 students have received positive behavior referrals. Students have divi, sorry, have dived into core content thinking creatively and critically in ELA, math, science and social studies. Our Performing Arts Department is practicing for upcoming band and chorus concerts. We currently have 150 band students and 40 chorus students. Students in CTE have participated in hands-on lessons, attending field trips, learned about career opportunities and more. Fun fact, CCMS staff represents over 500 years of combined years of experience. We are also excited for our upcoming Community Night on Wednesday, October 23rd, starting at 4:30 p.m. We'll have vendors, food trucks, inflatables and more. You can order a Currituck barbecue plate for dinner. The CCMS and MMS football game kicks off at 6:00 p.m. All middle school students are admitted free of charge. Come out and join. For Griggs Elementary School, get ready for a fantastic time as we roll out our third annual Title, First PTO Fall Family Festival on October 24th from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. This year, we're diving into the enchanting world of fairy tales. We're also thrilled to have a special guest reader, a parent from our community, who will share a beloved fairy tale in both English and Spanish, making it a delightful experience for everyone. Throughout October, GES is focused on the story of Rapunzel with all our teachers and administrative team joining in to read it to the students. During the week of October 21st, our school resource officer, Deputy Pierce, will be visiting classrooms to engage with students about Red Ribbon Week. She'll be leading lessons and reading books that spark conversations about the importance of choosing a drug-free lifestyle. To add to the excitement, GES students and staff will be participating in Spirit Week and getting everyone pumped up for Red Ribbon Week. For Jarvisburg, we're looking forward to our B-School Celebration and Title One Night on October 29th from 5:00 to 7:00 with a not-so-spooky spectacular performance by Tim Schoenfeldt from Creative School Programs. This will be followed by our annual Table or Treat Event for families. We're thankful for our family participation in this Table or, Table or Treat and we appreciate our PTA for helping to support this evening too. The Book Fair will be on site from October 28th, November 1st and is open late to the evening of our Title One Night. Please come out and see all the good things happening at JES.
Okay. Let's see. And with that being said, we will move on to informational items. We've got a Board of Education meeting coming up, November 21st, beginning at 4 o'clock with a work session and then the board meeting here at 6:30 that evening. Board member comments, superintendent comments, Ms. Parker?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make it clear that when I ask these questions, when I analyze data and when I push for improvement, it is not an attack. It is called accountability, just like Cognia provides accountability. Cognia is a global accreditation organization that is recognized by the State Department of Education and the United States Department of Education. It is an independent mark of quality in education and it exists over 90 countries. It was established in 2006, but tonight we will celebrate that finally in 2024, Currituck County Schools has decided to become accredited. Better late than never. As board members, we are accountable to our community. We are also accountable to the children we educate. Like everyone, I am glad we are improving. I have dozens of teachers who contact me weekly, who thank me. So, I'm not going to buy into the narrative that I am being negative when I am being honest. I am concerned about continued deficit. It is not enough to simply sit here as a board member and say, I hope we improve. As a board member, my job is to ask critical questions and hold our leadership accountable. Actually, State Statute 115(c) says the board must have responsibilities that include development of policy, budget development and to ensure that curriculum is in place. Again, better late than never. We improve areas when we admit the deficits. I want to thank Kristi Hodges for her transparency tonight. It is difficult to stand before a group of people and talk about what you do every day. I know Kristi Hodges. I know the work ethic she puts in for this county and I appreciate the fact that she was willing to answer the tough questions. We are currently ranked third in our region. I'll let you think about who the other two are ahead of us. We have the ability to be the best school in our region. We have teachers who are absolutely incredible and our students and parents are among the best. Again, I'm going to invite our board members to download the state data. I will happily send you the link. Take up those 8,000 pages and let's take a deep dive into the subgroup. Because when you look at data and you go to subgroups, that's when you find the real story in education. When we break it down gender, when we break it down race, when we break it down socio-economically, when we break it down school to school and when we break it down teacher to teacher, that's where the story is told and that's where the real work begins to happen. It's uncomfortable. It's going to be uncomfortable for our teachers. I will sit here and be a cheerleader for them and say, sometimes you don't have a good year. Maybe you have kids that come into your room that have lots of things going on. We have to have real conversations that, that happens. Maybe as a teacher, you've had a really personal tough year and you have to also be honest and say, I don't know if I brought my A-game today because we're human. But when we start to look at the real data, we're going to see real movement in this place. But it's going to take people being committed and it's going to take us as a board to decide to stop the song and dance and actually do real work. Thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just, just want to reemphasize what I said earlier about where we're at as a district. It's impressive that we've moved up so fast, so quick, in my opinion. And if we're, if we're, if we're increasing like that, it's, it's not just a local problem. Some of the issues that Ms. Parker has pointed out, it's a national issue. But we're exceeding. We're getting there and with the, with the work of our staff that's sitting here in this, this room that's put all this work to this and with our superintendent and our teachers, I, I just see us continuing our, our progress. And I'd just like to, to, to thank everyone for all their hard work and for the hard, hard work that's going to be coming. So, thank you.
Ms. Kraft?
Well, I reiterate what Mr. Banks said. You know, it definitely, I appreciate all the hard work you've put into it. And, and we are improving and, and we have to look at, I think we have to look at that too and, and celebrate our successes as well as the things that maybe we aren't doing as well. I did, I did visit all of our schools this month. Visited, I attended homecoming. I went to the Edenton game. How about those nights? That was a great game. Caught a volleyball game between both of our middle schools. Our schools have adopted Avery County Schools as a district-wide hurricane relief drive. And I've delivered supplies to half of our 10 schools and I have plans to deliver to the other half during the next two weeks. October is Fire Safety Month and I was at Central last week and walked by the gym and noticed it was kind of smoky looking and I'm like, ooh, and I kind of dipped in there and saw that Mrs. G from Central Elementary, the, the PE teacher, had a whole planned PE activities to practice fire safety skills. And even the SROs were in there, involved in it, working with them. So, that was really good. And I'd like to thank JP Knapp for their presentation tonight. Great job. I can't wait to get in her classroom. So, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Peters?
I just wanted to start off something different. Does Amelia and Kaylee, do you have any quick comment about how it's going at your, at our high schools? No? Okay, just making sure. We talk a lot about what's going on, but we wanted, just want to make sure you didn't have anything to put out there. Thank you again. This is Principal Appreciation Month. If everyone's not following our school, Currituck County School page, they are highlighting them. So, that's always fun to watch. I've had phone calls. I just wanted to bring to attention for parents maybe or families to talk about our bus situations with behavior and, and just how to act on a bus. And about language, I know we've been having press releases. I think we had another one go out tonight. We feel confident. A lot of it is just kids saying the wrong things, but parents need to know it's taken very seriously. We have certain procedures we go through and we call in other agencies and it's, it's, it's taken very seriously. So, I don't know if they really understand the recourse of what they may say or act when they think it's just messing around, but please talk to them. And Dr. Lutz, I don't know if in your closing, were you going to touch on why we kind of amended that zone, attendant zone? The reason why? It was because we found that some, a few houses were not even on the map. Can you just explain a little bit about that in your closing? Okay. And I just want to say thank you to all of our, I see a lot of teachers at the football, middle school and high school games that are coming out cheering on their students. So, thank you to all of our students, I mean, all of our teachers and staff who goes out there and cheers them on. And while we are talking about all the good things that we're doing, I know we're certainly, or at least myself, is aware that we still have work to do. It will take money. Some of these things we're talking about, like the coaches, will need, will need money. And sometimes in this climate, we get, you know, kind of rolled over the coals because we're, we're taking all this money. While we all certainly think it's well worth it, you know, our community needs to understand that, that the money has to come from somewhere. So, I hope we all continue to advocate not just for our teacher salaries that of course needs to be talked about with the state, but local funding to help fund all this. And I know we have nowhere to go but up. So, I certainly am excited to see where our future goes. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Lutz?
A quick update on the, we had a very micro redistricting piece. We're growing so fast as a county. When someone called in with an address, we went to look up the address and there was a cornfield. And so, that's what we were working off our GIS maps. And so, with the growth that we have in our county, we might be encountering this more. So, we made a small micro redistricting and added it and that was what Ms. Peters was speaking about. Our hearts go out to all those impacted by the hurricanes with Helena and Milton. We have adopted Avery County Schools. All of our schools are drop-off sites. If you want to even drop things off at the White House, we'll make sure they get to where they need to be. Special Olympics tomorrow. Great fill-your-bucket day. It's at 10:00 a.m. at the high school. If you have a chance, it's great, great to watch our kids get an opportunity. And we are a unified district across the board, which means that all of our buildings are supporting our Special Olympics and participating. So, we continue to do positive things each and every year. Just get a little bit better, one, one bite at a time. November begins our Giving Thanks Campaign. November is also Career Development Month. Our CT Department has exciting career exploration opportunities planned for students. There's Community Night on the 23rd, next Wednesday. The Moyoc Football Team takes on Currituck County Middle School. Should be a good game and a great night for our community. And I am proud to serve as the superintendent of Currituck County Schools. I'm proud of the work we're doing. We are absolutely headed in the right direction and it does not, you do not get there by accepting the status quo. We have to take a moment and pat and say, that's a great step in the right direction. And I'd like to thank the board for their support in this journey and we'll continue to drive down and get a little bit better each and every day. Thank you.
Okay. So, this month I did attend the CTE Advisory Meeting, advisory meeting, and it was very enlightening. I'm happy to say that they are out and about participating in our schools and encouraging students to explore the CTE program. I believe they're going into the elementary schools and will begin building birdhouses with their 5th grade students. So, they'll introduce them to carpentry skills. Volleyball and football games. I attended some of those at both the middle schools and the high school. And, you know, it, it was a proud moment for me. It warmed my heart to see Cameron Johnson coaching at Moyoc Middle. She is a previous Currituck County High School volleyball star. She is going to college to become a teacher and she is now coaching for us at Moyoc Middle and doing an outstanding job. And we hope that she'll come back and teach in our county with us. I rode the ferry yesterday afternoon with the students. Have any of you ever ridden the ferry with the students?
Yes, I have.
Morning, afternoon, high school? Well, if, I encourage you to do it again. It's just a real pleasure. Coming up, we've got Fall Festivals at Griggs Elementary School, Moyoc Elementary and Knott's Island Elementary. Lot of fun. They're, they're different at each school, so go to as many as you can. I'm very proud of their school system for adopting Avery County. That is where our former teacher, Kim Ashby, lived or had a summer home, winter home. K-5 is collecting everything from supplies and books to, they've got a list out. Check it out. It's on our website and on Facebook, all the way up through grades nine through 12, collecting body wash, shampoo, hygiene items. If you can help, please do. And we're doing that through November the 1st, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And I just want to commend each of you, Dr. Lutz and his staff, his, his leadership staff for the role you play in educating our children. And I encourage you to stay the course with their strategic plan, continue making adjustments as you see that we need. And, you know, our testing data revealing that we're number 12 out of 115 school systems is, is just nothing short of- is just nothing short of amazing to me, considering where we were a few years ago. So, thank you all for your hard work. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion. We adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?